Good afternoon. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. However, this is 2:00 meeting at which we are having public hearings on three different areas. There isn't a requirement for a quorum at a public hearing. It's just an information gathering session. There are three members of board here, and I assume the other three will come. We take sworn statements for this and the following. So if you plan to say anything, would you please stand and raise your hand? And do you affirm that what you say will be the truth?
I do.
All right. The first scheduled item to present concerns the Athens City Code Section 23.03.13T6, and it concerns wall murals. Carol, is that your committee you want to come up and give us? We've talked about it before, but just so that the people watching out there in the TV and...
Carol Patterson, Athens City Council and Athens Municipal Arts Commission. In November, the city council had an ordinance before them to change the wording of the acceptance of murals, and then realized, I realized, that it required a hearing. And so the ordinance is currently tabled. The wording that the council prefers is in number six in that section 23.03.13. Murals, painted wall murals or other similar artwork on public property if recommended by the Municipal Arts Commission and approved by the city council. This is not meant to be a final resolution to this whole question of murals. It is something that we can do until there's more time to really go into this issue deeper. I will tell you that the Arts Commission is actively working on it, researching other communities. So far, we've found most communities say, "We don't want regulations on murals. We don't want to go there." But we do want to go there. We want to find a positive way to approach this. The Arts Commission has also developed a policy for what their part of a recommendation would contain, and how some individual or group would apply to the Arts Commission for approval of a project, then the Arts Commission would appoint a three-person committee to review it. The committee gives the recommendation to the Arts Commission. The Arts Commission would then recommend to city council. So that is the procedure that we're looking to adopt immediately and then continue to study this issue.
The original wording was the mayor was to...
Yes. It said the mayor and approved by city council. The mayor really doesn't want...
I don't know why he doesn't want to do that.
And at one time, we had discussed removing the approval of city council. And this time, city council came back and said, "No, we changed our mind on that. We'd like to have the final say." And so that's where we're.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments they want to make on that subject? Okay. Do you have any questions on that commission? You have any? Okay. All right. That's the end of the public hearing on murals. Everybody had their chance, and they didn't say anything. All right. The next one concerns the Athens City Code Section 23.11 Table A, Schedule of Vault Controls to Change a Current Height Limitation of 75 Feet (6 Stories) and a B2D Zone to 50 Feet[292.83][292.83](4 Stories). Okay. Does anybody... Steve, are you going to tell us anything about that? And who brought that up? I don't have anything. I don't have anything here on time. Which... How tall is... Well, Security Building has more than four stories. But this is a B2D, the upper end there. How tall is the Cornwell Plaza? How tall are they?
Hopefully, in the packet of information that you have concerning reviews that was requested to conduct. Actually, it's a memo to city council copied to the Athens City Planning Commission regarding an inventory of buildings and their height in the uptown area, which included the B2D district and the B3 district. B2D being the two blocks south of State Street, B3 being the block north of State. That's the park. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 buildings, and I have listed their heights. But I also have a note in there that I was not able to measure their heights. I did the stories, and I didn't actually... You can get back and do kind of a Timber Cruisers kind of thing if you have enough distance to back off, measure.
Yeah. I remember that. No, I didn't. I thought it was all in this packet, but I don't have the packet. It must be in another packet.
Yeah. I just noted 38 South Court Street, it's four stories. That's in the B2D district. 8 North Court is in the B2D, it's five stories. 27 North Court is in the B2D, it's five stories. 35 South Congress, which is owned by the Ohio University, Bromley Hall, it's 11 stories. 84 North Court, which is in the B3 district, is four stories. 85 North Court, which is four stories.
Okay.
85 North Court was a planned unit development, so that was reviewed under a separate process. So hopefully, you do have that memo dated November 30, 2006.
Okay. Well, I have to look through my stuff I have. I have another envelope on this, so we can discuss it.
And I believe part of the discussion, too, involves recommendations of the yet-to-be-adopted comprehensive plan for building heights. This is what's recommended to be considered is lowering that from 75 feet (6 stories) down to 50 feet (4 stories) is consistent with the two draft comprehensive plans.
Does anybody have anything they wish to say here? Anybody want to speak to this? Does anybody on the commission have a question or want to speak to this?
Just one clarification for my benefit. If this is put into effect, Steve, would this not then mean that if an existing six-story building had a fire and was more than 50% damaged, then they couldn't rebuild to the previous height?
I don't have a copy of the zoning code right here with me, but there is a section concerning non-conforming uses in buildings and the amount of repairs or extent of repairs as a result of damage. And I believe the section says that up to 60% of the auditor's true value, you can do that much repair. But if the damage is greater than 60%, then essentially, you've lost your nonconformity. You have to comply. Or there is recourse then, too, to go to the Board of Zoned Appeals and ask for variance to reconstruct when you have damage greater than 60%. Different communities handle it differently. There are some communities that if you have destruction of some type, fire, flood, disaster, something like that happens, you can exactly restore. You can do 100%. But local regulations in the city of Athens only allow non-conforming buildings to be repaired after damage up to, but not exceeding, 60% of their value.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other comment, that's the end of the public hearing part on that. The third public hearing concerns Case 0613 Summit at Coates Run. And... If... Before we speak...
Hello. Rick Kirk with Edwards Companies. With me, Ryan Pearson from the Edge Group, our land planner, and Chris Schroes from our office. Since our last meeting, I wanted to tell you that we have met with the Athens Consultants for Civil Engineering Services, Burgess and Niple. We submitted our concept and our plans that are nearly complete for this layout, including storm sewer analysis, soils, sanitation, and then water. We had a fairly detailed discussion about runoff, storm sewer calculations, flood retention, our proposed crossing over Coach Run, and discussed the parameters from which we would design the site. We are in compliance with the ideas that Burgess and Niple uses, so that's a very important component for us. Also, we discussed in detail the soil investigation, which we've done. I want to tell you that we have conducted over 75 borings. We have several of them that are deep-depth borings to below the footing depth of our proposal, and the rock formations that the buildings are placed upon are very stable. The soil engineer with Burgess and Niple is very familiar with work that's been conducted down here, including the highway development. And we discussed things that have happened in other projects relative to where we are. We have cross-sections down through the hillside to show a proposed and existing and how we would contour the ground. So we had a very detailed conversation and felt comfortable that the design that we have will meet the stability requirements for the area. On that, we do have some information that the mayor had asked us last meeting about our parking. We have requests for a parking variance at 0.85 spaces per bedroom. We do have some information regarding our projects that we own and manage that operate at below that. We have a couple of projects here at 0.75 and 0.76 parking spaces, and the analysis that we have there, those projects do function, and we're satisfied with that. So therein, have lots more information as usual, but that's the context of the update from our last meeting.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything, or were you just... You were just there. All right. I don't have a sheet that went around to see, but if anybody wants to speak. I don't know who wants to speak on this. He asked for years to leave with us. Aren't you sure about Love Doll? He's asked to have it postponed at the moment. We just found out when we got here. I just thought, in case you didn't want to stay. Are you allowed to stay? Carol, you wanted to talk about the other thing, that's right. Okay, and okay. Let's get... Kristy, you're next on here.
Excuse me. Can you tell me when it was rescheduled?
It hasn't been rescheduled.
Okay. Just after...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, he was here, but he doesn't want to speak.
Chris Nigley, 15, Old Coach Road. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for the opportunity to speak today, and also like to thank Mr. Kirk and Mr. Schroes for talking with the neighborhood groups and providing planning and design documents for us to view. And also like to thank them for encouraging us to view the other developments in the Columbus area, and I have gone up to see one of them. I think there's the impression that we've attended the Coates Run meetings because we want to stop the development on Richland Avenue. But it's not just about the summit at Coates Run. We volunteer, as you all also do, with the City Comprehensive Plan, the County Land Use Plan, the Wellhead Protection Plan, Conservancy, the Tree Commission, the Historical Society. And our presence here is because we deeply care about our community, just as much as each of you care by your service on the commission. This is about a vision for the community, for those who will be citizens of Athens long after we're gone. I'm here today to present three concerns that I have about the complex. One, how it complies with City Code. Two, how it relates to the comprehensive plan. And three, a construction concern. About City Code. At the December 2006 meeting, the South Side Community Association members noted that they're not opposed, they are not, to oppose to the development of the hillside if it follows City Code and preserves the shape and contour of the hillside. I personally support this statement. I also support the concept of providing safe and attractive student housing, and would not oppose development of a summit at Coates Run if I thought the current plan for 878 beds would do that. But I do not think the present plan that calls for the removal of approximately the top 30 feet of the hillside and the moving of over 300,000 cubic yards of dirt can preserve the shape and contour of the hillside. If it cannot assure this preservation of the shape and contour of the hillside, then it doesn't comply with the established City Code. As it relates to the comprehensive plan. At a public meeting at which I'm sure all of you were present to review the City Comprehensive Plan, one of the most often identified concerns by the citizens was that the plan be a tool for the city to preserve our vistas and view sheds. I think a complex of this size would compromise that critical element of the plan for the same reason, its size, and so it does not agree with the comprehensive plan. My third concern is about construction. As I said, I did, when I was up in Columbus, drove over to the Quarry Development, and it does look like it's a well-cared-for apartment complex. I'm not familiar with the details of developing that site, but I can tell you that as I drove into the complex on the Quarry Road Lake entrance off Fifth Avenue, the one retaining wall that I observed, which was only about eight to 10 feet high and located against the old railroad bedlines, appeared to have structural problems. The retaining wall facing Quarry Lake Road was collapsing from the weight of the dirt from the railroad embankment. Could we encounter the same problem with the retaining walls that are currently still planned for the development at Coates Run? I thank you once again for your time, and urge you to consider granting final, and urge you to consider not granting final approval to the current plan that tries to put 878 beds on one of our hillsides. Thank you.
Celia? What, mural? Okay.
Muriel Grim, and I'm sort of representing the South Side Community Association, at least part of it, because of an attempt we made to get information from other people regarding how they felt about this project. We did this for ourselves because we wanted to know how people felt, as well as to give information to the Planning Commission and the city council. I'll... Well, that's what I'm going to say, plus the comments that we received. In a very short timeframe, basically since the end of the holiday season, some members of the South Side Community Association Executive Committee attempted to gather comments from Athens citizens, especially residents of the South Side, about the proposed summit at Coates Run development, and also the proposed agreement with the city that the city council was to vote on, or voted against on Monday. We asked for comments for or against, or whether people didn't know enough to comment or just didn't care. We reached about 350 people, approximately 300 of them on the South Side, with a flyer. We don't know how many of them actually read it. That was, it was too wordy, and still wasn't, didn't end up being clear enough to explain the complexities of the situation. We directed people to our website, where we posted the benefits of the summit. This was the direct wording from the Edwards Group, Final Development Plan. They listed about two pages of benefits to the city. And then with the problems of the summit that we had compiled several months ago, the 2006 South Side Executive Committee compiled those about several months ago. We received only 19 comments, which represented 23 people. One comment was open more to learn, was open to learning more about the proposed development, but opposed to moving ahead until several issues were settled. The remaining comments were opposed to the development. We did not receive or we did not gather comments from the 2006 Executive Committee members, although one of them's spouse did respond. Or residents who intended to speak at Monday night city council people, several city council meetings, several people showed up but did not speak. So those are not included in the count, but we assume that that would raise the number of negative responses, people actually commenting to over 30. We've heard far more than that of people who haven't commented. Seventeen of our respondents were South Side residents. Two were known to be from other parts of the city, and the residency of four was not known. Also recently, I've heard comments from people who had been in favor of these apartments over the many years that they've been proposed, with the hope of relieving pressure from conversion of homes to student rentals. However, these people, some people I have heard from are now rethinking that concept and feel that the overall preservation of the uniqueness of the city is more important for its future than to do away with that hillside and create the apartments. To make the commenting process as anonymous as possible, once the statistics of residency were compiled, the names of the respondents were deleted, and only their statements were saved. So you have a copy of the statements, but no names. And then finally, the reasons that they gave for being against the development, traffic 13 times was mentioned, hilltop removal was mentioned nine times, runoff and flooding eight times, general environmental issues in the ambiance of the area seven times, infrastructure and cost to taxpayers seven times, that the whole thing wasn't needed and it was too many students four times, trees four times, beauty three times, the scale of the development being far too large for the area one time, the effect on the residents of Greenbrier one time, the loss of the mounds once, and the financial impact on other landlords once. I feel that the big picture hasn't really been looked at enough here. If we look at these developments in terms of looking at the storm waters, looking at the water pipes, the water supply, that we're not really considering the overall impact on the city. And all of these negatives are part of the overall impact. As offered, the development is too large for the site. It is going to destroy the ambiance just as badly, even though the buildings may look a lot nicer than University Courtyard, they are still leveling the hill, and they are destroying what is unique to Athens. In addition to that, the costs of residential development to a city are always exceed the amount of money that's brought in, so therefore, the citizens are going to have to pay for this in some way. Oh, also, yeah, there should be additional people. We were waiting for representative of several student organizations who were against this. She did show up at Monday night's meeting, but she's late now, so there would have been additional comments.
Okay. Thank you. Now, do...
I think that Kristen, you're pretty much over the... I was on the...
Oh. You're on the Executive Committee? I don't have anybody else who marked that they wish to speak. Does anybody want to make comment on this? Okay. Anybody here want to know anything, ask a question? Okay. And that's the end of this public hearing. We have, that's the... We had three public hearings. They're all over now. We have, we'll start our regular meeting in three minutes. They needed some time to get ready. Are we ready now?
We need just some more.
We have to stop talking to each other because we're ready to go. They needed five minutes, so... We are still in session for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission for January 18, and it's 2:32... No. Yeah, 2:32. They canceled my eye appointment again, so I never, won't be able to see anything. They can't see me yet, and I can't see here. If you were not here before, when I took, had people affirm that they would tell the truth, and you want to say anything, please stand and raise your hand if you haven't been sworn in and you want to say something, if you want to. You affirm that any statement you make will be the truth? Thank you. We have a quorum present. There are four members. Mayor Abel is not here right at the moment. I expect him, but he's not here. We have a quorum. I gave the oath. The cases, the first case on our agenda was 0619, Tom Love Doll, a rezoning request for out off the, on Blackburn Road. He asked to have it postponed because he couldn't be here, didn't he? Why, that's why he asked. We have a request to postpone, I assume, because he couldn't be here.
I received a phone call from Mr. Love Doll this morning, and there may exist the possibility that he will not have to request this rezoning. And there will be, that, he'll know one way or the other within 30 days, and therefore, he just asked that the case be continued, not withdrawn, just essentially tabled.
No, it just says postpone, or it says postpone here. We do have a letter about a lot, the sale, possible sale of one of the lots, from Laura Moss, who was here, but she submitted this letter about it, so we can go into the file for consideration when it comes up again.
That was part of the discussion that I had with Mr. Love Doll. There's the potential that some of the property could be sold, purchased by someone else. And what he related to me was the proposed use then for the property would conform, would be compliant with the zoning, essentially, R1, single-family residential. But he doesn't know how that, how that may, you know, come to pass, if it will or not.
Okay. Thank you. We'll put this in that file, so when it comes up again, we'll have the information from her. It just came this afternoon, didn't it?
It's morning. Yeah.
All right. The first case is 0701, Mark Weiner, a lot split with a variance, who... One of these things, I couldn't tell where this was. You know, these, as I said...
I tried my best to include enough stuff in there.
Well, I know, but the trouble is, these little, these little maps that you get off your little computers have everything fuzzy, and as I said, they keep telling me they're not going to look at my eyes, and I can't see them. So I can't read the names of the places and where I am on them.
It's just after you come off 682, I mean, come off 33 on 682 to go through the plains?
Um, yes.
Right at the spot?
Mr. Weiner had, I've been working with him for several weeks, and he does have some photographs to try to help you get a bearing on where this is located at. Do you need to describe it from coming out of the plains toward the highway, or if I'm getting off the highway going into the plains?
Yes. Both. Tell us which way you're going and do the other way.
If you get off of Route 682, if you were heading north on 33, you have to stop at a traffic signal and turn left. the traffic signal and turn left coming into the plains. Just as you go over the bridge, over the highway, there is a little street called Sunset Drive on the right. And to be honest with you, I go that way home just about every night. There's so little activity on that street, you hardly notice it.
Like Sunset?
Mm-hmm. And then there's a, Sunset goes back into a subdivision, there's an existing single-family residential house right there, too. And then essentially, an open field, so it's a large, this looks like a large swale. Just about right across from where the bottled gas plant is in Buckley Brothers, which used to be landmark, it's really kind of across the street from that. So it's very, very close, and the intersection is 682 and Route 33.
But this, it backs up to the Chickies and Chickies House? The section of the lot, Chickie, Chickie? And that whole thing along in there, when you look the other way? Okay.
Currently, the lot is 3.60 acres, and as I said, it's owned by Mr. Weiner. He lives on the right-hand side on Sunset as you go in, but he also owns this lot. He resides to the right of the street, does own this other lot.
Is there a blue house up on the hill a little bit? A blue house up there? That's your house, okay. I used to know somebody who lived in that house. I know where it is, not bad.
What Mr. Weiner proposes to do is to take that 3.60 acres, divide it into three One lot would be 30,000, approximately 30,000 square feet, wood front on Sunset. Another lot proposed at around 28,000 square feet, which would also include the existing home that's there, would essentially be on the corner of Sunset and 682. And then the lot, and then width-to-depth ratio is fine on them. The one in question, though, is the larger lot that would end up being about 2.2 acres. It would just front on Route 682, but the width-to-depth ratio would be about 3.8 to 1, rather than 3 to 1, which is the maximum permitted. I'd asked Mr. Weiner to contact Rich Kessler at Athens, Athens County Water and Sewer District, Plains Water and Sewer District, excuse me, about sewer and water availability, and also to check with the Ohio Department of Transportation to see if they would permit access onto State Route 682.
Steve, this lot that's marked number two on your diagram goes all the way to 682, so it's got frontage on 682?
Mm-hmm. Probably one's a little clearer, if you get all the way to this page right here. This one's a little cleaner.
This page?
The very last page.
Okay, well, what fooled me is that it's a dotted line on that page, but this solid line that goes down right behind the house on number three.
That's a proposed.
And cuts a piece off of number two.
Yeah, that's, what's illustrated on all the drawings are proposed lot lines. Actually, there are two proposed lot lines.
So we've got a proposed lot line here, too, as well as here?
No.
What is that?
Yeah, that, this is the line.
What's that line?
We keep putting lines on these drawings.
It isn't anything.
Lines on maps aren't anything, drive me crazy.
There's a dirty screen on the copy machine.
These, down there.
Okay, so, so it is, this whole thing that's in dark lines is truly going to be only three lots, no pieces left over?
Correct.
Okay.
And one will open up onto, just the one on the highway, or two of them? Two of them, but just the one in the back will go onto Sunset.
To the best of my recollection, the house that's there right now, that's on proposed lot three, does have its driveway, its access point off of Route 682, essentially parallel to Sunset Drive.
And it still will after this happens?
Yes. Right on note that there's a proposal to change it, and I would assume that it's going to stay the same.
What, this one right here, is this 682 here?
This is 682.
Oh, okay.
So.
So it will come out on there, and this one will come out on, it'll be two. That always looks sort of dangerous to me, here, those driveways, I don't care about.
What, what's the distance, the frontage on 682 of that lot number three?
Approximately 160 feet. It's actually going to be a little longer than that because it's kind of on a, it's not a straight property line in the front. But the back proposed property line is approximately 180 square feet, excuse me, 100, let me go back to the drawing, 160 feet, with a 630-foot depth.
Those are kind of big lots. Do you have plans for putting other structures on those lots, like apartments or something?
No, not at this point. The, the, the plans actually are to sell off the existing house, and we're going to keep, there's actually an old building on the front there that we use, for the back half of it. The field, I can show you in the picture, it just doesn't fit in with the rest of it, because we see it as a separate piece, but at some point, we may do something, we may do something with it right now.
Well, do you have pictures that you brought, you bring them up? I'm not picturing this very well. I usually go out and look, but I had to go over to the hospital this morning, and I didn't, not for me, for something.
This is across the street from, to get an idea, this is actually standing in front of the property, so that's, that's somewhere over. This is the, the part that needs the variance, which is the field. You can see it from here, there's the field, there's the house, existing house over here. So there's like a natural barrier of trees that runs down that one side anyway, that kind of makes a natural barrier between this part of the property and the other part.
This is, this is the dino, or that's Chickie.
That's Chickie's house right there. And then this shows from Sunset, the back half of the lot, which actually goes down here.
This is down here?
That would be, well, and this one here.
This is Sunset.
Yeah, and this one here, if you're looking at this part here, behind the house.
Wait a minute, this is, this is.
Well, this is another drive.
This is another drive, the same thing, a lot line there.
Yeah, okay.
So this.
We're covering it with a microphone. We do that all the time, I don't know why.
This shows the back with the existing, that's that building I was talking about. And this looks at the side lot, that's the back of the house there, so it's sort of a natural piece back here.
What's this right here?
That's Sunset.
Sunset, okay. And this is the one you want to sell, is that what you're?
The house, yeah, the cell, and then it basically would go back to the tree there, and then the back half, that part of the lot we're keeping for us, and then the others, just it doesn't fit in with the rest, and at some point, they might be somewhere separate then.
That's going to be hard to divide the other one eventually when you want to.
Well, we're not thinking of dividing it, because it's sort of a, there's nothing much you can do, other than coming in the front, because that's where the highway is, and it just goes back to where it goes back to. So it's kind of a natural piece, is the way we look at it. And we contacted Rich Kessler, said that at some point, there could be a water tap on sewer on the back part of it, and the front part, because it sits low, where if someone did do something, we'd probably need a lift station, unless they probably brought it up to the level of the road, and then we didn't discuss that part. And when we contacted Elga, or someone else, I actually contacted them before me, they said, "It's just a guardrail," basically, they said they didn't think that would be a problem.
So it's on the variance for lot two, for the depth to width?
Right, right. And it's not the scale, but there won't be any issues with the distance between the house and the lot lines on lot three?
On, on. Well, the existing house.
Yeah, the existing, yeah, the existing.
It sits within all those lot lines, whatever length it's around, I mean, it's in the planes.
So there's no setback requirements there? I think, your question is, how close is the proposed line to the existing house?
Yeah.
And there's not been an actual survey conducted, these are all just proposals, rather than go the expense of having a survey without knowing if a variance could be granted, these are all just estimates. Yeah, I have, I have no idea where the proposed lot line is off the side of the existing house. There are no setback regulations outside the city, except in platted subdivisions. When those come through, there, there are fronts and rears and utility easements on the side, but any construction in the plains, now there's essentially no, no review of things that go on up there, unless it would be covered by the State Department of Construction Compliance, State Building Department. I think, to the best of my understanding, though, the proposed property line would be quite a distance away from the existing house. City code requirements are for at least eight feet on one side of a building. On lots that are less than 66 feet in width, you can go down to 10% of the lot width, but in no case less than four feet, that's in the city. So a verification of would it be eight feet or more off, would it be eight feet or more off the line?
Yeah.
Move for a motion?
Yeah, you are.
I move that we approve the request for the lot split with the recommendation for a variance from depth to width on lot two.
So any other discussion, all papers say aye?
All right.
Aye, okay. Did that go to the city council, too?
Yes.
The city council? Okay. They like it, papers, putting up here. The next one is 0702, Bennett Alba, lot split and transfer. Do you want your pictures back so you can show them at the city council? Okay, these are all these things. I didn't know where this was either. I can't read the names of the roads on these things. Younger people on here. Don't you think it's fuzzy?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I think it is fuzzy. Not lying, it's fuzzy. Where'd it go? Now I can't find it. Here it is. Okay, somebody tell me exactly where this is. Exactly. Nobody's telling us. It looked like Lavell Road someplace there.
The property in question is on a road called Kramer Lane.
Okay, I see up here, this one, that must be what that says. Is this Salem over here?
It's off Salem Road.
Salem.
Which is in Athens Township Section 33.
And did I see a Lavell Road on here someplace? Down here?
You saw, looks like Heans Ridge Road.
No, I didn't see that.
And Salem Road.
Does that look like Lavell Road to you?
Yeah.
Right there, both of those, that's what it looks like.
No, right hand, downward it says Wood Donald J. Glor right hand, you see?
Oh, yeah. That's what it says. Yes, I do see that now.
What's the name of this lane?
Kramer. Kramer Lane. There's a, included in your pack of information, copies of deeds for the property, existing deeds. One property's known as 6792 Kramer Lane. This is just barely within the three-mile planning jurisdiction of the city.
What they want to do is make a bigger, bigger landlocked lot, instead of a little landlocked lot.
Hopefully, my memo did a good job of explaining the situation. I'm not going to read it word for word.
Yeah.
But just to kind of paraphrase it, there are two existing lots. One of them somehow was able to be landlocked. There is a recorded easement, though, to access the property across an adjacent property, currently over five acres in area, only having 40.55 feet of road frontage. So I have no idea how one was landlocked without a variance, without road frontage, and how the other was recorded with road frontage less than 50 feet. But in any case, they are existing, recorded taxed parcels of land. I received a call from Garrick and Garrick Attorneys, who were attempting to record proposed split and transfer, but no approval had ever been gained from the city. There's a series then of correspondence between myself and Law Director Hunter about how to handle this, and he just recommended that, that the commission look at it. And then decide if there's a necessity to grant variances for existing conditions because they're being changed. The best illustration, I think, let me get back in this pack of information, there's a small aerial photograph in the back, and. Larger properties, one's over five acres, has this house on it. And here's Kramer Lane, and then the driveway that comes back, that's actually all on this property, but there's an easement to access that property, which is the one that's landlocked. So that's kind of the existing situation, there's no proposal to change that at all.
So the law director's suggesting that we also pass a motion requesting approval of that right of way for the larger parcel? That we pass a motion approving the variance for not enough road frontage?
Actually, there was, I just presented the information to the law director, and he said the planning commission should review it. This is just my own opinion, I think this is a good time, for example, to grant a variance for 40.55 feet of road frontage, in lieu of, now that it's going under five acres, the 90 that's required, so that'd be one variance. The other one would be essentially to acknowledge that the other lot has no road frontage, but there is a maintenance, there is an easement included in the deed for the adjoining property. So that'd be a second variance, a lot without proper road frontage, but an easement in lieu of road frontage.
And we haven't heard from the city county health department?
No. That was another thing, I think if you look in, in the memo, I had recommended that the health department be contacted, because they do have to sign off on any proposal, even if it's a minor subdivision, transfer to adjoining property owner, not creating a new building site, because what they want to look at is the condition of existing systems. Does this transfer of property actually diminish runoff area that existing systems might need? Does it compromise existing systems and their potential to runoff onto neighbors in any way? So, yeah, health department have to sign off on that, just like in the case of Mr. Weiner, too. I'll need some sign off from Rich Kessler at Plains Water and Sewer. That's just one of the things that you do have to have before a minor lot split can be approved.
Well, maybe we need to continue this until we get a review from the city county health department.
I'm not sure why, there were, there were quite a few different series of emails and telephone calls between myself, Garrick and Garrick, and Ms. Alba, I'm not sure why there's not someone here to speak to it. If you saw bottom of the memo, at the top, I copied her on it, and it does identify the date, the time, and the place of the. And it does identify the date, the time, and the place of the meeting.
Could I ask something about this, this, there's a house in a big lot with the drive-through, and then on that smaller one, is that a house? But what's, it looks like we're going to extend that lot, there's another building back in there. Is that a house?
That's a, no, it's like a pole barn.
Oh, okay, it's not, not a residence where it would have...
No, no, no. No, it's an accessory structure. It's kind of like a... Sorry, we're going off from talking to Ms. Alba.
With the same people who own all that lot, or the other way?
The Alba's will then own that building if the transfer occurs. I actually did, did kind of a cursory review with Mike Cooper, sanitary in the Athens City County Health Department, on this property. And his initial reaction was that this would create a better situation, not a worse situation. It would create more area for that small lot. Actually, almost double its size from a half an acre to around an acre. And probably would not diminish the ability or the soil capacity of the larger property to... It wouldn't compromise its functioning. But I haven't heard anything from Mike. I think, as a matter of fact, if you look in my memo, too, I informed Ms. Alba that I believed in any case that approval from the Athens City County Health Department was also necessary. I told her to contact Mr. Mike Cooper of the Health Department, that he was aware of the situation. I recommended the statement concerning the situation be obtained from the Health Department. So, don't have that yet, but it's a prerequisite for any split.
And if we, even if we approve this, it won't happen?
It won't happen unless that's...
Unless that's signed off.
Yeah.
Right, that's correct. Yeah, going through with all this, there's an, in a way, there's an assumption that the Health Department will be able to sign off on it. Even if I receive a request in my office for things that don't need width to depth, you know, don't need any variances, if the Health Department doesn't approve it, it doesn't happen. We've had several instances of that recently because the health regulations are a little, I won't say stiffer. There's a lot more scrutiny about sewage disposal now, especially water table, depth, depth of water table, depth of soil that's able to percolate because of all the clays in the area. The amount of coverage, I believe, on piping in leach fields has been increased from two feet to three feet of coverage in a lot of places in this area. It's hard to get three feet of good percolable soil. So the Health Department, there's a lot more scrutiny now than there used to be in times past. The Health Department's required some properties to be seven, eight acres in area before they would approve them. So, yes, as Mr. Hazel said, even if you think variances are necessary and you recommend them, until the Health Department signs off, it wouldn't even matter. Wouldn't happen.
Well, I was just wondering whether it needs to be here that we get everything together or whether we can look at everything else and know that nothing will happen until you get the approval of the Health Department?
Yeah, I know there's always a comfort level that everybody needs to have when you make a recommendation contingent upon something else, which may be contingent upon something else. So this depends on what kind of comfort level you have. Although I can tell you that even if it was recommended for those two variances, landlocked with an easement and only forty point five-five feet of road frontage for the other lot, and even if council approved that, without the Health Department's sign off, it wouldn't have any effect.
Well, doesn't it make sense to wait until we have the Health Department's sign off and put it all in one package?
That would be the most efficient way, I believe, to forward it to council. If not, then, you know, they're kind of, they're in the same quandary. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure why I'm a representative of the seller, why the seller or the buyer.
Well, I move that we continue this until we get the review from the Health Department.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was the last of the cases. Next was communications. We have a communication from Ron McDade. It has a case number, zero seven zero three. It's a request to rezone land from M to R three on East State Street. Haven't we talked about that place before?
No.
We didn't address it when we did the M's that time? Didn't we look at that other one?
We got, we got information.
Well, I know we had information about it, but I, maybe we just mentioned that that was one that was out there, that there was an M out there. We crossed over, they were going to have to cross over there, build something, I remember talking about that.
This is all the way out at the end, next to the bike path.
Yeah, 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 this was out, way out there.
In general, everything east of Route 33, bypass on East State Street, south of State Street is zoned M manufacturing, and everything on the north is zoned B three general business.
Yeah.
The only thing that I can assume is that in 1960, when the railroad was still active, that seemed like an appropriate classification of land because there was transportation access. But in the meantime, then, the railroad is gone, and the railroad bed has turned into a bike path. Uses that are permitted in a manufacturing zone, excuse me, in a B three general business zone are also permitted in the manufacturing zones. There was never really any conflict with use. And that's why I think probably there wasn't too much attention paid to the necessity to rezone that area. The reason that I brought this to you as a communication is on page, I gave you copies of the zoning code on pages twenty-three dash twenty-five and twenty-six about the process for rezoning. And the thing that I'd like to point out, too, is that twenty-three oh nine oh seven says that the planning commission has to make a determination if a public hearing is appropriate. So really, what I'm looking for today is, do we proceed with a public hearing and schedule that? It has to be advertised 30 days in advance. So it'd be five, six weeks away before the public hearing could even be held. But it's an optional, it's something optional for the planning commission. You have to make a decision within 60 days of the application. If there is no public hearing, within 90 days, if you determine a public hearing is appropriate. And speaking with Mr. McDade also, that, the timing is really not that critical for him. What I didn't want to do is schedule a public hearing and possibly load up your agenda, you know, without your knowledge.
Is this, I can't quite tell from this, is this not the whole area that's M? It's just a small area with all these lines and arrows here?
I think in the packet of information...
This is such a property, but then there's all this M here, and they're got lined with M. But is this just that one piece of property we're talking about?
If you look at this page that I've marked as... Existing zoning, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's this page I'm on here. This page...
Existing zoning. You can see East State Street?
Yeah, but it's just this piece of property we're talking about.
That's correct. It's a very small portion.
So we're only taking, is that spot zoning? And if you just take that one spot and do it? And you have a whole M out there that shouldn't be an M?
Across the street to B three.
I know, but...
I'd previously given you information about spot zoning. Spot zoning is not necessarily illegal. It makes sense when it has a relationship to a plan or a growth pattern or something that's appears to make sense. So I did attach to your packet of information that I gave you. And what's also part of the requirement for the submittal is... Let me get back to this right here. Twenty-three oh nine oh four J, the applicant has to provide a statement of the ways in which the proposed amendment relates to the comprehensive plan. And so what I did was I copied sections from the proposed city council, excuse me, city planning commission plan, which I don't believe is much different than the council plan in respect of this particular situation. Pages marked as page forty.
Yeah, I have page forty.
East State Street corridor.
I thought we made a correction on this in the plan, but what's the south Y doing in there? The south, I mean, I'm just thinking, the south Y doesn't apply on the East State Street corridor as far as I'm concerned.
What I did was I just made copies of the...
Yeah, you made copies of what was there.
The plan that's at the city website, which I believe is the planning commission plan. Let's see. Talks about making the area more pedestrian friendly, which the bike path does.
Well, I'm not, I'm not pulling about that, and I'm not saying that it isn't, but I, if this is going to be a thing where there has to be a public hearing on that, why isn't the whole M thing just taken out of there? It doesn't seem to be appropriate. That's my question.
If you look on what's identified as page forty-one, it says zoning districts applied to property along East State Street corridor is an unusual mix of classifications relative to existing land uses. On the south side of East State Street, most of the land is used for commercial purposes, yet the whole length of the corridor from the community center eastward is zoned M or industrial. Since the list of permitted uses in the M zoning district includes commercial uses allowed in B three, existing and recent commercial development along the south side of East State Street conforms with the zoning code.
But if it's still M...
On the north side, the corridor is largely B three, except for residential area in either end of the corridor. And then there's some more, as you go down through, there's some more discussion about B three versus M. In the case of Mr. McDade, he only owns one property. I think you have actually a survey that was conducted by Ken Highland. It's a little over half an acre, point six five four. It's between the pull-off area for the bike path, there's a little parking lot there, and then coming back toward town Casa Lopez. This property is essentially pinched between East State Street and the convergence of the old railroad bed, and that's why it's so long and narrow.
What's he going to do with it? Sell it?
Yes. And I can just be, yes, sir?
Just wondering, is there a significant advantage for building in terms of setbacks or something that would justify changing it from M to B three?
There is a, believe it or not, there's a great difference between the bulk controls in a B three zone and an M zone.
Yeah.
In a B three zone, you can build right up to the front property line. You only have to stay 10 feet away from your neighbor in the rear, in this case, city of Athens, bike path. And on the sides, you only have to stay 10 feet away. In a manufacturing zone, you have to stay 25 feet back in the front. You have to stay at least 30 feet away in the rear. And that 30 feet increases as a function of the height of the building.
So basically, as it is, if it's, if it remains a B, if it remains an M, this is almost a useless piece of land.
You take 25 feet plus 30 feet, 55 deduct it from, I think it's about 85 feet deep, you only have 30 feet to work with. If it's zoned B three, you only remove approximately 10 feet, and so you have 75 feet. In any case, whatever's developed there will have to be close to the existing development, the existing restaurant. The area, as it pinches down toward the bike path, could only be used for parking possibly. But you can see how it really tapers down hard. The real usable part of the property really is just up by Casa Lopez. There's not really a half an acre of usable land there. And I think that's one of the big reasons Mr. McDade would like to see the, would like to see the change.
Probably it's not worth delaying the consideration of this to consider all of that M.
Yeah.
On the south of the East State Street, but it seems to me that that's something that ought to be considered pretty quickly because of the fact that there is more business development going on in that B three area. And it would be to the advantage of this development on the south, I would think, if it's no longer an M zone, if somebody's out there in the factory there. And the character of that part of East State Street seems to be changing, so...
And it was, as I, one, the main thing I wanted to point out from what I'd copied from Mr. McDade about the comprehensive plan was that it's been identified as something that needs to be looked at. They don't say necessarily what needs to be done, but they're just saying, you know, it appears to be, the development pattern has not been in accordance with the zoning.
It also says in the sections of the quote that you gave us that city council is required to have a public hearing for this, right?
That's correct. Yeah, it's not optional on the, on the part of council. It is optional on...
This is not such a, not such an enormous change. It seems to me it's worth, are having, are delaying it by having a public hearing since it's going to be one by council anyway if we recommend it. And that gives the public ample time to look at it.
They still have the opportunity for input. You're correct, because there will be another, there is a required public hearing, not one required at this point. So this actually, I don't know if you want to consider it, maybe you want to put it on the next agenda and just decide that you don't need a public hearing? It's essentially in conformance with what's been recommended?
Do we have, do we need to have a motion to say that we don't need a public hearing?
Oh.
Or just simply I move that it be on the next agenda?
Well, it's not on the agenda, it's just a communication, so you have to get it on the agenda.
Let's put it on the next agenda. Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
Case number seven oh three be put on the agenda for the next regular planning commission meeting?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Do we have any other communications? You didn't give us one more. I didn't get it, anybody else get any? Do we have any, this isn't the sheet I was working from in the first place. Announcements here, no, see, she has the name. Announcements on other business. We have the next meeting is scheduled for February first at 2:30. That's our next regularly scheduled meeting. The next, no other business. The next item is opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Does any citizen wish to speak? They don't want to speak. Minutes, do we have minutes? Minutes, we have minutes of, we had minutes in here. Well, we do have a communication.
We have a public hearing minutes for the 21st. She wasn't here, so I can't...
Oh, she wasn't here, she can't approve this. Somebody who was here has to do this.
It wasn't here.
Everybody was here...
This is January fourth. Here, I have one thing on January the fourth, we need something there. We all have, Harry wasn't here. This is this one right here.
On the fourth.
Fourth.
No, I missed...
He wasn't here.
I don't think, I looked it over and I think I found it.
I looked it over, and I don't think I did, I don't think I saw anything there.
I looked it over on the January fourth.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I think that's all we have here from that one.
We have January tenth, special session.
One of you either.
And I have a couple.
Oh, okay.
The biggest table is not just...
All right.
So I have approval with the pressure of that bus.
Somebody second that?
Second.
All in favor say aye? Okay, that's the second batch. I suppose we just have a two set of, I don't know. All right, well, now we're down for adjournment. That's Harry's, yeah.
My turn? I'm moving to adjourn.
You don't have the others seconds for that. All right, we're adjourned at 3:15. I thought we were going to be here for hours.
Yeah.